All right, I will call to order this regular session of the Marshall County Board of Supervisors, July 2nd, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. here in the courthouse, first floor, meeting room. Notice to the public, the Board of Supervisors welcomes comments from the public during the time allowed for discussion. You are requested to approach the podium and use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit the time used to present your remark in order remarks in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. The normal process on any agenda item is for the chair to read the item from the agenda. The board is given an opportunity to comment on the issue and/or place a motion on the floor. An opportunity for discussion may be presented at which time the public may participate, and a roll call vote will follow. Roll call, please. Hibbs?
Yes.
Heil?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Okay, if you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve today's agenda.
Do you want to second that, Jarrett? But we cannot hear you.
I would love to second.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Roll call vote, please. Goodman?
Yes.
Hibbs?
Yes.
Heil?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item number five is the consent agenda, which includes the previous special session minutes June from June 25th, 2025, approved claims as audited, and 5C file manner management plans, those consisting of Upchurch Feeders Incorporated, number 66010 at 70508 US Highway 30, Colo; Burt Farm and Livestock Company Seminole Site, number 65507, 2368 140th Street, signed with changes; Jeff Braha, number 65417, 1951 Hart Avenue State Center, signed with no changes. Item 5D, annual publication of salaries in accordance with Section 34918 Code of Iowa, the salary listing for fiscal year 2425. And that is the end of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve today's consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call vote, please. Heil?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Hibbs?
Yes.
Okay, item number seven, approve extensions to law enforcement 28E agreements through June 30th, 2026, and authorize the chair to sign. Sheriff Phillips, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Sheriff Phillips, Sheriff of Marshall County, this is our 28 agreement law enforcement contract extensions for our incorporated towns, and there are 11 of them. This is just typical for our extensions for that law enforcement services. We finally got everybody's sign and submitted this time, so.
Any changes?
Nope, rates have still remained the same at $65 per water meter or taxable property, and then also $300 per liquor license that is issued. So we've kept those rates low. We understand sometimes the communities that are not growing their tax base is not what they would like it to be, so we like to maintain at least that law enforcement services for those communities, and so far I think we've been meeting their needs.
Any questions for Sheriff Phillips? I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the extension to law enforcement 28E agreements through June 30th of 2026, and authorize the chair to sign.
Now I'll second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please. Goodman?
Yes.
Hibbs?
Yes.
Heil?
Yes.
Item number eight, purchase of a Kubota SVL 97 track loader from Central Iowa Farm Store of Marshalltown for $42,782.9. Paul?
Paul Guileville, county engineer, this is a trade-in, we're replacing one of our older units that had a serious, basically lost engine. And so for about the same price as replacing the engine, we could trade up to a new one, and we'd get this equipped so that all the attachments, we have two of these SVL 97s, and so then the attachments can be used by either one, and it just, it works really well. It's a heck of a tool for us for light grading and driveway work and things like that.
Any questions for Paul? Okay.
Now I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a Kubota SVL 97 track loader from Central Iowa Farm Store for $42,782.9.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please. Heil?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Hibbs?
Yes.
Item number nine, OPN additional services discussion and possible action. Lucas?
Good morning, Lucas Beck, Ubuilds and Grounds. This is a request we got from OPN for work that has actually already been done on our planned upgrades for the sheriff's office facility. After we did our initial bidding process, the, our meetings with the code official, they had extra requirements for us on that planning, so we had to kind of go back to the drawing board and add basically a staircase off of the back of the sheriff's office, and this is the cost that OPN is saying that they accrued for adding that work into the the planning. So I got a call from Rick Seeley, who is a principal partner with OPN, was like, hey, how do you want to handle this? I said, well, give me the details, I'll take you to the board and kind of have this discussion on how you guys want to proceed, whether we say, okay, go ahead and set us a contract change, or we could essentially have somebody from OPN come and have further conversations with us if we want. Kind of your choice on how we want to handle it.
Go ahead, Jarrett.
Well, Lucas, I can add, I mean, I know that we paid them $60,000 last year, and $140,000 the year before, and I believe those were all sheriff's offices, I don't know if that's on the scope of the drawings that they done before, but when you're looking at $200,000, we've already paid them, and they're wanting to hit us another $15,000 now for, I mean, the whole point of them was to get us up for bid, and we never got a bid, so I'm not sure if this $15,000 is necessary when we've already given them a pretty good amount of dollars.
Yeah, yeah, I know, we've definitely had that conversation before, but this was, I guess, something that OPN asked to at least have a discussion on, so. I mean, I can.
So my question, what what are next steps with OPN?
We are, I've reached out to them asking for an update on the updated plans that we have that are hopefully going out for bid here soon. Those plans are currently at the code official again, being reviewed. The idea is that we have made basically no changes to the inside of the building on this, other than some very, very small changes, so there shouldn't be any requests for them for additional scope on on this plan. So once we get that, we can move forward with the public posting process and the the resolutions that we need to handle internally on that.
Okay. And do you have a timeline? Defined soon?
The, the plans were sent to the code official, I think, three weeks ago, and he thought it wouldn't take more than two. So there's that.
And so the the next step after that would be to put them out, put it out for bid?
Yes.
And see what comes back?
Correct.
Do you have questions, Kevin?
No.
So my thought is, if we have a successful process this time, we might entertain this request.
Okay.
But I am not really inclined to just pay it out now.
I think that's fair. I can, I will definitely take that back to them and say, hey, at this time, we're not super jazzed about the services that OPN has provided overall on this project, and if, you know, things go smoothly, we'll have that discussion then. Does that work?
What do you think, Jarrett?
I think that's reasonable, that if we get bid, that, yeah, I think that's appropriate to pay, and, I mean, at the same time, it's not like they didn't do any work on all this stuff before, they got us some really good drawings, they got some really good, they got things started for us to determine what we need to do out of the sheriff's office, which is, which was helpful, but it obviously didn't help us get to bid, and maybe the scope of the projects, a little bit different than some opinions of us in the room of what they put together, but they did do work, but the fact that we didn't get a bid, I think is the biggest concern for us, for us to keep showing out cash, ARPA dollars, tax dollars than a bid. We want to make sure that we're spending dollars appropriately, not for just going out and getting nothing, yeah.
I agree.
Okay. Do you have anything you want to add?
I just, I got kind of what, what Jared said, that, you know, they missed the bidding process by $1.8 million, and I think, just an apology, I think, that's kind of hard to accept. We had our last meeting in in April, and that was one of those situations where we needed these sooner than later, these, the reduced scope of work. It wasn't like they were revamping the entire project, they were just removing those items out, and then, and I've expressed my concern with that latest one, is alternate is removing some of the windows, so we're only going to get part of a project done potentially. So I'm a little concerned on their accuracy of those estimates on those construction bids, so, yeah, I think I agree with Supervisor Heil, at least, we need to see what this is going to at least come up, come up to with the final product.
Right.
Should they meet the needs of the sheriff's office and the taxpayers.
So you feel equipped to deliver that message, Lucas?
I've got enough, I think.
Okay. All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Lucas.
Okay, moving on. Item number 10, we're to public forum. Time set aside for the public to make comments on topics of county business other than those listed on the agenda. No action will be taken on any of these topics brought up in the public forum. Is there anything for public forum?
I think it's a wonder how you looked at me. I have, I have pictures on my phone, does that work for you?
It doesn't, we wouldn't be able to show them.
Okay.
Do you want to, do you want to identify for the record? Mark?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark Wyant, 2601 Ridge Road.
Okay.
I'm just gonna give you my phone, okay?
Okay.
Is that fair?
We'll see.
I suppose what I want is that.
If you, if you have a, if you have a specific site, we can let James know.
It's just, it's not a site, it's my phone.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's just the look from the road for different areas. What would be the most, you might get past my.
Perhaps you've seen this, Paul, but. Go that way.
Lot of county roads looking like that.
We had a call on another one this morning.
The thing with it, the thing that I was wanting to focus in on that was sticking in my head this last week is a communication part, and I don't think I, well, this is the, this is the one that I was really wanting to get at was the scalloping out. You know how the grader kind of went over, it went into, it's my neighbor Roger, he lives on the corner, and went into his yard and scraped out about maybe two foot yard, and then tried to drag it out into the, into the runoff, what do you call it, do you know where the, where the water came through the road and made that hole? And it made kind of like a mud hole, because the guy kept sinking, his front wheel kept sinking into the mud, into the yard, and he finally just kind of scraped some dirt over it and left it be, and then went up by streeters and went in for a good wide swath into that one, you know, and I know the effort is into, well, I have to assume that the effort is to get the water to drain into whatever ditch is left, you know, to make the the road drain, but one of the things that I was, so one of the things that's been picking at me this, over the past week is
Could be that.
The, there's no communication with us, you know, there's, and so all we can do is watch the road grader come by and go, okay, you're doing whatever you're doing, you know, but, I mean, you're not out there, no one, if I drive up Ridge Road, the ruts are still, you know, so deep, so wide, back over against the grass edge over there, up by the, that's Roger's house there, mine, if you go, if you went back up the hill, up there where there's mailboxes up there, right up, see up there? You're good at this, see, right up there at the very top? Right there, that, that's the ones, right there, that's not what that looks like, because there's a rut there where they're going to, they've gotten calls from the post office before, my other neighbor, Harland, I quit, okay, Harland Helgren over there. The post office caught hold of them before and said, we're not delivering mail to these things, because about maybe right now, about maybe 18 inches, two feet away from the mailbox is a rut about so deep that, you know, that the mail guy just, if he, if he's not being real nice, you know, if he wants to do, just go out and do his job by the book, he'd drive by, but what he does right now is he stops his car, gets out, walks over to the mailboxes, puts all those in, you know, puts it in for that, but, again, getting back, because I'm going to start wandering here, is communication's got to be key, and Roger was, went and talked to the operator and somebody when they were scalloping out his yard, and the only response he got was, well, this is all we can do. But there, there's no plan in place, nothing to tell us, nobody knows what's going on for, for, to media, or to remedy, not media, to remedy the situation with it. The fella came by and he's buried, he tried, he's tried to make that corner where that drops off and into my yard, and there's that drainage, culverts, is that the, what's the word? The drainage pipe under the road. Culvert? Is it a culvert? That one under there, you know, the the runoff is etched back into the road about maybe so far from where it used to be, but it's covered, you know, it's got grass and stuff growing up around it, because it's just. Communication has to be the big part of this. We, I don't know if we're, if we have a plan, if there's a plan, I'd love to know it, you know, what's going on with it to make it work. I'm not a, not an operator, I'm not a engineer that I could sit there and tell you, well, this is what you need to do, you know, because it's out of my wheelhouse, but knowing what the approach is so that a person can understand it, because I think as far as with me, I know I've, I've gone as far as I can, you know, as for what I can do, what I can offer up, where I've said, all that's, yeah, there's a, right in the middle of that little, right to the, to the right of the tree that you see there in the ditch, that standing one that's not there anymore, right to the right of that is a runoff thing that has to stay open, and I don't care if you need to take all of that and make it to make it work, I don't care, you know, and I'll sign whatever anybody needs to have it done, but I need to, I'm just looking for some type of an answer to, or a plan, so that we can sit there and just get owly all the time about watching the guy come down the thing, because ever since he did the cutouts on the road, he made one pass up on the west side of the road going down Ridge, and then coming back, there's nothing touched that covered up any of the ruts coming down, you know, coming back from the south, you know, coming north from the south on it, so you just don't know what's, I don't know if he's sitting in his, in his maintainer going, I don't know, you know, I don't know, because there's, there's no, there's no communication.
Looks like there's no easy answer. I don't know, Paul, do you want to address?
And if you look, if you look at those little pictures, the thing that's missing on all of them is a ditch. Just pan over this way a little bit. See this property right there? There's no ditch, the bottom of the ditch is the edge of the road. You can't keep a road like that in a rural setting, and if you go back up to the top of the hill by where those mailboxes are at, that rut is being caused by that paved driveway that's at the top of the hill. The water can't get to the ditch, it's coming out of this drive, buzzing around right here, this is the top of the hill, you shouldn't have erosion problems at the top of a hill. The only thing that can cause it is runoff coming from another source, but there's no ditch here, so the, we need to get the water into that ditch, look at that, there's no ditch on the, on the north side either. The water runs right down the edge of the road, creates a big rut, and, and I know that people mow their frontage, but it's not their yard, it's public right of way, and it should be a ditch, and the only way we can make this road work is to, is to have it drained. Drainage is the number one thing, it's what's causing every one of these problems. The other thing that's causing these problems is at least one, three inch rain, it took, what, 40 minutes to drop three inches of rain? You meant down to 275th? Because that looks even worse than your road.
No, I haven't been down there.
It's, we've had, I've had several complaints on that, but it's just a matter of, you know, when we have spots on 275th, no ditch, you know, and it's just there, we've got it, we've got to dig the ditches out to make them work. That's the.
Would that address the issue?
That's not, the big plan is, is that it definitely needs graded and ultimately paved, and it's, it's going to be expensive, and it's going to take a while, but that's the only fix, the, everything else is just Band-Aids, and I don't like using Band-Aids, but that's all we have right now here.
Can I argue with you on that just a little bit?
Yeah.
Since I've lived out, I've been there 30 years. I'm on the cor, I'm Roger Matthews, I'm on the corner of Ridge and
Yep.
And that big house right there. The road has gotten wider and lower because of the way things are being taken care of. The gouge that we're talking about that came down that hill is because the water can't get into the ditch. The road grader leaves a dip along the side of the road, so that, you know, the water hits that dip and goes down the hill. It does not, it's not that the ditches aren't there.
Yeah.
It's that the water can't get to the ditch.
There's, there's no ditch here, though, and there's no ditch right here where these ornamental grasses are, there's a rut that goes right down the edge of the road, and it, it really ought to be, and you're right, the road has lowered, but this ground right here needs, where those, where those grasses are at, needs to be about two feet lower than the edge of the road.
It is.
It is not, two, two vertical feet.
Right there where the grass starts, it is not, I agree with that, but under that grass, you guys were just out there four or five years ago and dug that ditch out from the end of that culvert down to, to the corner.
We just, we need to get the, water needs to get off the road and to the ditch, and then it won't make that rut that, that is a foot, foot and a half, two feet deep, that when we get these heavy rains, they, it cuts in there, and it cuts in there pretty fast. But the, but the drainage is the key to making anything work.
And I agree with that, but you can see in that picture right there, what I'm talking about, the road grader is leaving a gouge there to where the water can't get to the ditch. The ditch there is actually a foot, foot and a half lower than what the road is, because when I put that in there, I came to the county engineer at the time, I asked him if I could put culvert in there, he said, yes, as long as the road has, has a right way to drain. It, it's more the problem of how the road is being left when the, when the road grader goes by is what the problem is.
And between, between blading and traffic, the road does, it gets wider, all of our roads get wider and lower, and ultimately what we have to do is we have to pull the shoulders up and, and narrow that road back up. We have a lot of roads that, you know, normally they're built, they're 24-foot wide, wide roads, we've got parts of rock roads that are 30 feet wide now, and they weren't, you know, they weren't graded that way, they just, they just kind of go down and get mashed out, and we've just, the maintenance is to bring the shoulders back up, and, and they look, then the perception is, is we made this dangerous road, well, all we did was put it back to the way it was, you know, when it was built, and then once the grass grows up and everything gets soft again, it's, you know. But drainage, it's, you're right, though, on the lowering of the roads, we've, the biggest problem we have with oaks, you know, with oaks going down to Haverhill, it's, that road's two feet lower than it was 20 years ago.
And even on the corner there, 260th, where it goes up the hill, you know, on 260th, in that area, I mean, the, the road has really changed, you know, as far as going down or getting wider and lower, because the ditch on the opposite side is just about nonexistent too. So, but it used to be where the water could get into that, you know, under the mowed part there, and actually drain down the mowed part of the ditch, but it's got to where the, you know, like you said, there's a edge there where the road grader's left lip there where it can't get in the, in the ditch anymore.
So, Paul, is it better to not mow to the edge of the road?
No, people can mow wherever they want to mow, it's just that we may not have.
I'm just saying, does that, does that exacerbate the problem?
You can't run a mower on a, on a two to one, you know, and if we're, if we're going to be, you know, digging the ditch out, it's going to be that two to one side slope that isn't mower friendly.
Right. Right, I'm just asking that, like, once, if you do, if you do some work in this area and dig some of the ditches out, is it, is it best then to just leave them and let them?
We won't plant, you know, bluegrass and lawn, we'll plant cover crop and things that just can control the erosion as fast as we can.
Yeah.
It's always a struggle to get anything to grow in a ditch, especially in July and August, and it's, if I want to make it stop raining, all I got to do is plant a bunch of cover crop, and it won't rain.
Put it out, Bart, you know, water.
Okay. Mark, your, your frontage is not the problem in this, in this equation, you know, and I appreciate all your cooperative, you know, nature, but it's just, there, there's several places where the ultimate fix is going to be, we're going to have places where we have to go on private property and make changes, and we're going to have to have, you know, have to have agreements and easements and to do that.
So do you have any immediate action that?
Just, just to try to, try to maintain ditches in the right of way that we have, I mean, everything that we do has to be in the current existing right of way. And anyplace where, and I know that the landowner to the north of 260th, they've said that they cooperate with us if we need to get some, some easement to.
Is that down behind me, you mean?
No, to the north here, in this.
Oh, oh, well, that's Harland.
In this area, was that Harland's?
Well, that's a, some guy bought that farmland from any fireman that stuff up over the hill, I don't, never even met him, he's got no residence out there, he just.
For, for that, it's just a safety improvement, you can tell, just see that dark area right there, that's, that's steep, it's like a one-to-one slope, that might be being charitable. It's, so it's a problem, like, when it's in the winter time or anytime there's, you know.
Yeah.
This past week's rains were really rough on the gravel roads in Marshall County.
Especially south of town, it seemed like there were some spots that were really affected.
Oaks, Lou Ray.
And most of it's in Eric's territory, the guy that, you know.
So, anything?
We're going to, we're going to keep trying. We're not going to quit.
So can, I guess, Mark's question was also about communication. So I think it's helpful for them to know.
Yeah. And you can call me anytime you want. I, I'm pretty sure I've got your number.
It's that one that says, oh, no.
Does it start with three one nine? Is it a three one nine number?
No, seven one two.
So, okay, it just wasn't, I knew it wasn't around here, the area code.
Yeah.
It's just, it's as, yeah. It, I, the idea has been to just, I think, just a frustration in, can remember all the stuff we went through with, just even the gravel curb? Because whoever was grading was doing the pass and a half.
Yeah, and that was even the previous operator, I think.
Yep, yep. And that was making to do that. That was making one thing happen. And I don't know what that contributed to, to anything at all. Even that little choke neck by there by my curb or coming into that thing. Guys could dip your blade in there all you want and get that stuff going. I do not care.
Okay.
Anything to, to make it move, to help it move along and do what it needs to do. Remember this, the thing I was talking about before too was over in the, and you've seen it, right there on that, um, west, that northwest cul, no, it's not southwest corner, you know, that goes around on my property there. The side, on the east side of the road where Roger's at, that side of the road on the, the graded part is, it, there's a good, it's got to be a foot and a half, two foot difference between the level. Because for some, well, I know why, because that idiot in that semi went off the road. And then the other one trying to pull him out went off the road. So all you guys had to replace the culvert because they smashed that all up. And that's what dug that part out. And when guys came by and tried to fix it. I mean, I should have written down the truck company's name, I guess. We're going to get towed out because somebody should have been putting the bill for it. You see what I mean?
Yeah.
You, you're free to take any of that you want. And the culvert extends over into that ditch. I think you can see the edge of it there.
It lands right, right in this neighborhood, isn't it?
Oh, the, the other side.
Yeah, that's the start of it. And then, yeah, there you go.
But see how far it goes in? You got, you got all that area. Dump what you want, pack what you want. I don't care whatever makes it work. I'll sit down and shut up.
But we will invite any supervisors to come out and look at this all as well.
Yeah. I've actually been out there a couple times. So. It's a difficult situation to remedy, not an easy fix right now.
You see that, Paul, for me, from this distance, that, the way that corner goes around mine? And the way it has such a more gradual turn around Roger's area?
I'd rather.
If you guys make, take whatever you want to make it look like that so the road stays the same width and just kind of turns into Ridge Road. Like you said, take what you want. I don't, I do not care.
Okay. Okay. Anything else for public forum? Jared, do you have anything?
Uh, no, just like to thank Dickinson County for their hospitality today and, and for James's team for making this all work out. So appreciate it.
Glad you were able to join us. Enjoy Okoboji.
Yes, thank you. And their courthouse is, is wonderful. They've got nice hospitality here.
Okay. Moving on to adjournment, the next regular session is scheduled for Wednesday, July 16th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. at the courthouse in the first forum meeting room here. All business to be acted upon at that session should be submitted to the county auditor recorders or the board of supervisors' office or email the board clerk by Wednesday, July 9th, 2025, at noon. There being no further business to come before the meeting, we are adjourned at 9:35 a.m. Thank you, Jared.
Thanks.